Greenwood Common Council on Monday, May the, what's it, May the 4th. And I've asked
Has joined the meeting.
Mr. Bates if he would open our meeting this evening in prayer. So, Ron?
Okay, thank you. Let's pray. Lord, for this day you've given us, we ask for wisdom today for the leaders of our country, the White House, to the city halls across our land. Give wisdom to the medical personnel who are on the front lines combating our pandemic. We also pray for wisdom for our first responders here in our communities who help to keep us safe on a day by day basis. And we also lastly ask that you give us wisdom as we meet tonight, this city council, as we deliberate on behalf of our constituents. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ron. Roll call.
Bates?
Present.
Campbell?
Here.
Dine?
Here.
Gibson?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Hopper?
Here.
Lexi?
Present.
Pendleton?
You're muted, Brad.
Here.
And Williams?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. All of you should have received copies of the minutes from our regular meeting of April the 20th. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, roll call in the minutes.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
C?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved nine zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
The IDIM semi-monthly was posted on SharePoint. The litigation report did not get posted, but it will come later in the week. And should any of you have questions about either of those, please contact me and let me know.
All right, thank you. Anything going to control at this time? All right, Committee and Board reports. Any reports? RDC has not met since our last meeting, so. All right, seeing none, then audience input. Like, we've figured out how to do this, so this is a time for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on the agenda. There is a five-minute time limit per individual and a 20-minute time limit per topic. So anybody wishing to speak to the council at this time, state your name and address for the record. We'll give them just a second.
Colleen Evans
Has joined the meeting.
All right, seeing none at this time, then we'll move on to audience ordinances and resolutions. There are none under notice of intent to consider. First reading, ordinance 2015.
An ordinance amending Chapter 9, Article 3, Division 1 of the Greenwood Municipal Code 1993 as amended to add specific regulations regarding stormwater connection and discharge to public sanitary sewers sponsored by Williams.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. Any discussions, questions?
Just one, Mr. President, if I, yeah.
Yes.
I think we addressed this years ago, and then we, and for a while there, we have a, certain sections of our city, we had a voluntary program for those who had been discharging water into the sanitary system. So I guess now this is putting, putting it, becoming more serious about the matter and putting, putting teeth into the, into this mandate that we need to accomplish on behalf of, of the sanitary system for all parties involved.
Yeah, I believe, and Shawna could correct me if I'm wrong, I believe this is being mandated by the Department of Environmental Management, IDIM. So this is language that they want us to use, and part of our agreement with them, of course, is to follow their guidelines. So is that correct, Shawna?
There was a suggestion that we look at our ordinance and have specific penalties and prohibitions on illicit discharges to our system. We do have such language already in our sanitary sewer regulations and stormwater regulations. So to make it even clearer that it's there, we are isolating a section to specifically reference those penalties, those prohibitions in stormwater and sewer in one place at the, at the end of the sanitary sewer regulations. And we're hoping that that will draw better attention to it so IDIM sees that it's there.
Okay. So it's really not changing anything, just that we already have, it's just putting it in a more obvious place?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hopper must still be outside.
I, I am, yes, sir. I think somebody's building a deck back behind me back here. Sorry.
It's private birds, I'm sure.
All right, any other questions or comments on ordinance 2015? Seeing none, then roll call, ordinance 2015, first reading.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine? Gibson?
Aye.
Aye.
Hoppers?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Resolution 2015 passes, first reading nine zero. Resolution 2007.
That is ordinance number 2015.
I'm sorry, ordinance 2015 passes, first reading nine zero. Resolution 2007.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of City of Greenwood, Indiana redevelopment district tax increment revenue bonds of 2020 Series A Madison Avenue Streetscape and Northwest Trail Project for the purpose of providing funds to be applied for the cost of public infrastructure projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith and paying the cost and expenses arising from the issuance of such bonds sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bates, was that right?
Aye. Sound like?
Mr. Dine, I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mike. Hopper.
Second by Mr. Hopper. Any questions, discussion? I assume Sam is here to answer questions, if we have any.
Sam, and also Zach and Jennifer.
All right. Any questions on resolution 2007? All right, seeing none, then roll call, first reading, resolution 2007.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Resolution 2007 passes, first reading nine zero. Resolution 2008.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of City of Greenwood, Indiana redevelopment district tax increment Series B Work Bill Road project for the purpose of providing funds to be applied for the cost of public infrastructure projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith and paying the cost and expenses arising from the issuance of such funds sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. by Mr. Dine, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi.
I think I heard a goose second.
Any discussion or questions on resolution 2008? All right, seeing none, then roll call, resolution 2008, first reading.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
All right, resolution 2008 passes, first reading nine to zero. Resolution 2009.
A resolution declaring certain area within the City of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing, sheer to through an entity to be formed sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second. Second by Mrs. Gibson. Any discussion?
I've got, I've got just a brief comment. I've had the opportunity to talk to a number of constituents over the last two weeks, and the biggest concern about the project is the fact that it's speculative in nature. And the people I've talked to are almost unanimous in their sentiment about that, so I'll be changing my vote to note, to know this evening.
All right, any other discussion? Typically, I don't say a whole lot, but if y'all don't mind, I'm just not trying to change anybody's mind or anybody's vote, but Sheer Group has done a lot of work in our city in the past, including at least two other speculative buildings. And they also own some other buildings, two of the, or at least one of the buildings they own houses Polytater, which has been before the council before, and has been a good corporate citizen. And the other, one of the other tenants is Max Light, and the same thing, they've been good corporate citizens and good tenants for Sheer Group. The two on the agenda tonight is two CF1s from companies that are housed in the others, two other speculative buildings that Sheer has built. And while they did not know who those tenants were going to be when they built the building, obviously, so those were speculative buildings as well, one building that we'll see on the CF1 tonight currently has 58 employees at an average wage of over $25 an hour. And the other building has 32 employees with an average wage of almost $17 an hour. And I think while we don't know who the tenants are, Sheer has done a good job in the past in filling these tenants, or filling these buildings with tenants that, you know, pay good wages, and both of those, one, $25 an hour is really good. The one that's almost 17 is above the county average. So I bring that up simply because I know there's been a lot of question, I've had a couple emails about speculative buildings, and that's why I vote, have voted for them, and obviously we'll vote for this one tonight. But I just did want to share that for the public's information as much as anything, so. Any other comments or questions?
I'm available, Mr. Campbell, if someone.
Any questions for Mr. Sherman? All right, seeing none, then roll call, resolution 2009, first reading.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Nay.
Lexi?
He said nay.
Nay.
Pendleton?
Nay.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Nay.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Resolution 2009 passes, first reading six to three. Second reading, there are none, but we have two public hearings tonight. Resolution 2010.
Resolution confirming resolution 2005, the declaration of a certain area within the City of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for property tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing, 1173 Airport Parkway LLC Phase 1.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. This is scheduled for a public hearing, so we will open it up for a public hearing at, right now. So if you're on the, in this meeting and wish to speak for or against resolution 2010, the floor is yours. Please state your name and address for the record. Give everybody just a second to make sure. All right, seeing none, then we will close the public hearing. Any further discussion on the council on resolution 2010? Seeing none, then roll call, resolution 2010.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Nay.
Williams?
Aye.
Nay.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Resolution 2010 passes on a vote of seven to two. Resolution 2011.
A resolution confirming resolution 2006, the declaration of a certain area within the City of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for property tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing, County Line Properties LLC, 1173 Airport Parkway LLC Phase 2.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, Mr. Dine, second by Mr. Lexi. Who made that motion? Mr. Dine? Mr. Hopper, okay. And second by Mr. Lexi. Any, it is scheduled for a public hearing, so we will open this up for a public hearing. And if you wish to speak for or against resolution 2011, please state your name and address for the record. All right. Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion on the council on resolution 2011? Seeing none, then roll call, resolution 2011.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Nay.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Nay.
Campbell?
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
All right. Resolution 2011 passes on a vote of seven to two. New business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance 2016.
An ordinance transferring funds within the aviation fund from Budget 411000 to Budget 442000 sponsored by Gibson.
Anybody here to speak on this ordinance? Give us some information.
Greg Wright.
All right, Greg, yes.
This came about, we learned two weeks ago that the airport would be eligible for a grant from the federal government for approximately $69,000. But the rules on that were that it would have to go to operating costs. So what we would like to do is put that money towards the operating costs, which would be the salaries and wages line item, and then move what we had budgeted there to capital asset line item for a water and sewer extension project that we are doing to make it so that the northern part of the airport would be able to be developed into the future.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wright? All right, there is a request for suspension of the rules through first reading, so I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules through first reading.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion on suspension? Seeing none, then roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading on ordinance 2016.
Lexi?
Aye.
Pendleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill? Hopper?
Aye.
Resolution 2016, rules are suspended through first reading on a vote of nine to zero. Motion on first reading.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion then on ordinance 2016? Seeing none, then roll call, ordinance 2016, first reading.
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Resolution 2016 passes, first reading nine zero. All right, miscellaneous business. If you're here, a member of the audience tonight, and would wish to speak to the council regarding items that are not on the agenda, this is your time. Again, there's, the time limits are in place, five minutes for an individual, 20 minutes per topic. So if you're here, please state your name and address for the record.
Rick Farrell.
Has left the meeting.
All right, seeing none, then we'll move on. Any miscellaneous business from the council? Everybody doing all right? Okay, all right, we'll move on. Other miscellaneous business, Corporation Council.
I have a uniform conflict of interest disclosure statement for acceptance at this public meeting, so it may be filed with the state. It is for the attorney Shawna Coons for her son, Jackson Davis, who is working part-time at the Park and Recreation Department this summer, for any interest she may have in his earnings, as he is a dependent in her household.
Do I have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Hopper. I did, last time when we were together, we talked about these kind of motions, and we have all the CF1s coming up. We were advised in the past that we should do roll call votes on all votes. As you can see, we have 17 CF1s. I did talk with the Corporation Council this week and the city attorney, and we are going to do voice votes on these, but we will clarify if anybody votes nay, if it's not a unanimous vote, if it's unanimous, won't be a problem. But we'll clearly state that it's unanimous, and if there is a nay vote, we will ask you to give your name, so that is clear, so we know who's voting nay, and we think as long as we make that clear, we shouldn't have any problems. So is that correct, Shawna?
Correct.
All right, so we have a motion to accept the conflict of interest for Shawna Coons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No opposition, the motion is accepted unanimously. Compliance with standard benefits for the following CF1s. Do we just read these off, Shawna, or do you want to read them?
Either way, it's fine with me.
Let me do it. We need a motion to accept AIC Income Fund Crossroads RE Resolution 13-11 in substantial compliance.
I'll make the motion, Mike.
A motion, motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. A motion to accept All-Star Properties RE Resolution 16-06 in substantial compliance.
So moved.
Mr. Bates, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. All in, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to find County Line Properties RE Resolution 1614 in substantial compliance.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Bates.
Bates.
Bates. Any questions?
We've got a smooth operation going here, don't we?
All in favor, yes, we do. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No one opposed, the motion's passed unanimously. Motion to accept CDW Electrical Company Resolution 1516 in substantial compliance by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to find Echo Greenwood LLC, FKA Emerson Office Park RE Resolution 18-29 in substantial compliance. Motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None, then that motion passes unanimously. Motion to find Echo Greenwood LLC, FKA GWA Wheatcraft RE Resolution 1826 in substantial compliance by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates.
0826.
0826.
0826, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously, no opposition. Motion to find Endress Hauser USA Automation Instrumentation RE Resolution 0832 in substantial compliance by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Opposition that passes unanimously. Motion to find E.H. Hauser, Endress Hauser, Flotek, AG Division USA RE Resolution 08-32 substantial compliance by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Motion to find Gateway Park RE Resolution 18-01 in substantial compliance by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to find GLA Properties RE Resolution 19-19 in substantial compliance.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bates, or motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to find Greenwood STS RE Resolution 17-03 in substantial compliance by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to find ProStar Properties RE Resolution 19-12 in substantial compliance by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates.
Should be 09.
09?
Not 19.
All right, resolution 09-12. Thank you, Mr. Bates. The second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to find Sheer GW2 Building A RE Resolution 17-07 in substantial compliance by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposition, we find them in substantial compliance on a unanimous vote. Motion to find Sheer GW3 Building B RE Resolution 17-07 in substantial compliance by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to find TA Partners RE Resolution 08-04 in substantial compliance by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates.
Hey, Mike.
Yes.
This is Lexi, I need to abstain on this one.
Okay. All in favor, then, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, all opposed? All right, that passes with eight yays, no nays, and one abstention. Mr. Lexi abstains. Yeah, Linda, did you have something to say?
I did. I was, I was going to ask about the number of employees on this one because I'm sorry, it said 15 within three years. Never mind, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Then we, motion to find Three Amigos Realty RE Resolution 07-08 in substantial compliance by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates.
So.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Passes unanimously. And last, motion to find Verus Partners RE Resolution 18-13 in substantial compliance. Motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That passes unanimously as well. Shawna, did we cover those okay?
You sure did.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Ms. Coons?
I have nothing further, thank you.
All right, Mr. Wright?
Nothing.
All right, anything from the mayor's office?
I have nothing.
Mayor's good see you. All right, then we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a safe week.
Appreciate that, all you, all you do. Appreciate it, all you, all you do. Everybody stay safe and healthy.
Have a good evening.
Hi, Colleen Evans.
Has left the meeting.